The March 4, 2019 meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Lacy will lead us.
Good evening. Tonight, I invoke, for Women's History Month, the memory of the Honorable Shirley Chisel, the first African-American woman ever to serve in the United States Congress. She began her first term 50 years ago this year. She served for 14 years. And after she retired, she gave a speech in which she said that she had spent her career fighting for equality of opportunity for people of all races and of all backgrounds, and for effective, generous, and compassionate action by government to ensure that equality of opportunity actually exists in America. She spoke positively about a new generation of people committed to family and community, and to taking more responsibility for others, a kind of responsibility needed to accompany our new personal freedoms. And she hoped that future generations would thereby come to experience times of greater equality and prosperity. These words, which she spoke in a commencement address 35 years ago, ripple forward in time with oppressions and a call to serve, which I hope we will all follow this evening, that as council members with skills and abilities and live consciences, as she said, "We will, quote, 'stand up and be counted with the audacity to forget conventionalisms and forget tradition when tradition is no longer an answer to the problems facing our communities.' And instead, what we will do is to do our best deed, think our best thought, looking only to God, whoever your God is, and to our consciences for approval." So let us begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again once everyone. Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks are limited to two minutes. We'll take the following people again who signed up. Mr. John Wells, and that is all who I have on here for invitation audience. Mr. Wells? Going once, twice, okay. Anyone else like to come forward? Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, Congress. Chairman of the Council. We're going to try this very long story again, and it'll probably become a serial event. There is a very famous case, or a fairly famous Supreme Court case, Conick versus Thompson. Conick was the prosecutor in New Orleans. John Thompson was a young black man, 22-years-old. He was accused of murdering a man and then being involved in an armed robbery that went bad, and his weapon discharged and supposedly, well, the blood from the assailant wound up on the pant leg of one of the three victims in that attempted armed robbery that went bad. So, what happened was, he wound up being convicted. He took them, well, he was on death row for 14 years, but prior to the death row position, he was incarcerated for four. Four plus 14 is 18 years. He was to be executed. And in fact, he's another one of these cases of wrongful conviction. And the story that I was hoping to get across, and I have great difficulty condensing it, is, to be blunt, the prosecutors were really eager to win. By George, they were going to have a convicted, you know, they were going to convict a person who committed this terrible murder. Well, the only problem was that the two crimes were divided up, so you had two and two prosecutors, although they were clearly working together. But there was this problem, that they had a piece of fabric with the blood, and they even had a blood test done. But that piece of fabric disappeared between the jailhouse and the first trial, gone forevermore.
Ms. Johnson, could you please summarize?
Okay. And the point of this is, there were 14 pieces of evidence that might have established his innocence, but those were hidden. And so ultimately, this, well, anyway, now you have to wait for another installment. You know, how did the Supreme Court decide that he shouldn't get the money that the jury decided he should?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no other movement in the audience for invitation audience, the invitation audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda that's not listed? Okay, seeing no lights or movement, move forward. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Approval minutes. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February 19, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Hare's representative Reverend Neil, Reverend Dean Nelson, Chairman of the Board of the Frederick Douglass Foundation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 19, 2019? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carries as read, the minutes of February 19, stand approved as read. Introduction to bills. Madam Secretary, could you please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening?
Bill Number 1119, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Classified Service Detention Officers' Pay Increase. Bill Number 1219, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Rights of Classified Employees: Limitations on Joining Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff, 3. Bill Number 1319, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Adequate School Facilities, Mead Village. Bill Number 1419, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Farm Breweries in Residential Districts. Bill Number 1519, An Ordnance Concerning Private Disposition of County-Owned Property Located Along Maryland Route 214 at Maryland Route 468 in Edgewater, Maryland.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Could you please read the title of resolutions to be introduced this evening?
Resolution Number 1019, Resolution Encouraging Participation by Anaronda County Residents in the United States Census Bureau's 2020 Census.
Okay, thank you. Moving along our agenda. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 319 as amended.
Bill Number 319, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer of Funds and Supplementary Appropriations.
Good evening, Mr. Barron and the crew.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. For the record, my name is Peter Barron with the County Executive. I have with me Mr. Thoreau and Mr. Swain to help with all the tough questions. This bill we saw at our last meeting, and we amended it. The administration asked that the council pass Bill 319. As was requested, there should be an updated fiscal note in your packets, but just very broadly speaking, as amended, Section 1 of the bill transfers $468,300 from the CAO contingency account to the Office of Personnel for Overtime Audits and Recruitment Initiatives. Section 2 of the bill, as amended, now recognizes $873,200 of revenue received from grants not anticipated in the budget. Bill 319 is a routine transfer of appropriation authority between county departments with the general fund and other funds. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any council members have questions regarding this? Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The pretrial services program grant, is there a very brief description of exactly?
Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office. Sure, that grant is to help reduce local detention population in short court appearances while rehabilitating and preparing offenders to live successfully in their community. It specifically helps fund, specifically some equipment in the detention center to help with some of those pretrial programs.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other lights on or questions, we're going to open this up for public hearing. Number 319 as amended. I see Ms. Johnson heading forward. Anyone else that'd like to come speak on 319, please come forward.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I really don't know and understand all of the details of these transfers because, you know, the statement is pretty sparse. And, you know, what are the details about the pretrial and so on? And I like to hope that everything is well-founded, and it's a good cause, and this is something that needs to be done, but I would just like to remind you that in the federal budget, 22 cents out of every dollar the federal government spends is borrowed. And someday, that's going to have to be paid back. But in the meantime, we're piling up just this staggering amount of debt for the interest. And so I would encourage you to consider that if there's any opportunity to reduce expenditures, where you could honestly legitimately say, yes, this would be a good idea, but weighing the alternatives, perhaps we ought to try to conserve some of these funds. I would ask you to do that. Thank you so much. Because remember, it's your grandchildren that are going to be paying the interest. Right now, it's 22 trillion dollars. Even at, you know, I mean, it's a huge amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Number 319 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Bill 319 as amended?
Bill Number 319, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer of Funds and Supplementary Appropriations.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 319 as amended.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 319 as amended is passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 619.
Bill Number 619, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning General Provisions Electrified Fences.
Okay, this is my bill. Certainly, we had a talk at the work session. I'm sure you'll hear more during the public hearing, and there's no really questions. I don't know if the administration want to respond about the bill.
Peter Barron, Office of the County Executive. Nowhere here with me is, sorry, Lori Rhodes and Greg Swain. Sorry. Seeing your moment, I thought Phil was coming to the table. So, the administration has no opposition to the bill.
All right. Well, seeing that there's no other discussion, why don't we open it up for public hearing? Thank you all, Mr. Barron. We have two people signed up, Mr. Daniel Lynch and Ms. Cindy Williams. Mr. Lynch, your name and two minutes, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Lynch from McNamee-Hosey with offices at 88 Best Gate Road here in Annapolis. I'm here today on behalf of my client Electric Guard Dog, who is a national company which installs electric security fences throughout the country. They have clients here in Anaronda County, including the FedEx facility in northern Anaronda County, who'd like to have such a fence installed as an additional security member around their existing facility. Unfortunately, zoning ordinance currently is written, such a fence is not permitted. So the legislation has written, allow such a fence kind of as an additional security measure, so that if you're going to install such a fence, you have to have an exterior fence surrounding it. And that basically means that no one would be able to come into contact with it in the event someone comes onto the property. They'd actually have to go over an existing fence to get there. My client also, who's, her representative, their representative here today, also uses what's called a 12-volt battery to power this, which is just a very, very low shock. So it's more of a deterrent than anything else. But again, we support the bill, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and my client's here to also provide some additional testimony and answer any questions she may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Cindy Williams with Electric Guard Dog, 550 Assembly Street, Columbia, South Carolina. We appreciate you taking the time to consider this amendment. We do support it, of course. It is, as Mr. Lynch said, just additional perimeter security. It is very, very safe, very effective. It's utilized in businesses that have outdoor storage, think trucking terminals like the FedEx, that just can't protect their stuff, their facilities any other, any other way effectively. We have over 4,500 fences across the country. Many jurisdictions do adopt similar type language, and I'm happy to answer any questions. It is, actually, one other thing. It actually is a monitored burglar alarm system. It is a monitored system, monitored 24/7, just like your home security systems and so on and so forth. So if someone does breach the perimeter, it does place a phone call, just like any other monitored alarm system would.
Great. Any questions for this panel? Okay, Ms. Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is 12 volts the lowest effective voltage for this kind of system?
12 volt is like a car battery.
Well, I mean, I know it is a car battery, but...
Yeah. And it's solar panelled, it's charged by solar panels, so it doesn't pull any additional, but that is what the system is run on. Oh, and the volt, the shock effect is 1/10,000th of a second in duration. It's very, 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 very short, so it's very safe.
Okay. And is there any need, or is there any other place where we regulate, does anybody know the amount of voltage of an electric fence, or an electrified fence? I was wondering whether the 12 volt voltage is a standard amount, or is it regulated from other source of law, that's all?
There is a standard for electric security fences. It's called the IAC. It's an international standard. It is for the regulation of electric security fences, and our energizer and equipment comes in at half of the allowable rate. So yes, it is allowed to be more, but we come in at about half.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions? Sorry, Councilwoman Rodgia.
I just had a quick question. I'm hoping that you, you know, have the experience or have had the experience to answer this, but if a bird were to land on this fence, what would you expect?
You would expect nothing. A bird's going to land on the top, and the top is a ground wire.
Okay.
The bottom is a ground wire also.
Okay. And if they somehow touch the electrified part?
It's the same that we, you know, it's just a very, very, very short. It's akin to walking across carpet on a dry, cold day and touching a doorknob.
Would not be fatal to you?
Oh, no, it can't be. I touch it about once a quarter. I have to touch it.
Okay, thank you.
They make me, so I can come and testify to you guys.
That satisfies my inquiry, thank you.
We won't have any demonstrations this evening.
I'll be glad to if you need me to.
All right, any further questions for this panel? Thank you, you all excused.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to come forward to testify on this bill? Okay. Real quick, I know I'm going to take a break here, but I know we had a cellphone issue. I think we've resolved that. But Ms. Hare, you also have some Boy Scouts, we'll do this real quick?
Yes.
That would be great. It's my understanding that we have some Boy Scouts from Troop 758 in Crofton here with us tonight. Awesome. I just wanted to give you guys a shout-out, recognize, thank you for your hard work. If you all have anything you want to say, or anything like that, by all means, no? All right, well, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Great. Public hearing on Bill Number 619 is now closed. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Bill 619?
Bill Number 619, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning General Provisions Electrified Fences.
Okay, seeing no further lights or discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 619.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 619 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 719.
Bill Number 719, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Licensed Premises of Licensed Dispensaries, Growers, and Processors of Medical Cannabis.
Okay, Ms. Pickard, Councilwoman Pickard is the sponsor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maryland is among 33 states in the District of Columbia to legalize medical cannabis. Anaronda County currently has two licensed dispensaries that are open and operating, and eight still in some frame of limbo. When considering medical cannabis facilities, the majority of counties in Maryland chose to classify a dispensary as a pharmacy, and a grower/processor as a manufacturer, and then considered them permitted use in all areas where those classifications of businesses are allowed. Anaronda County crafted a very restrictive zoning code specifically for the medical cannabis industry. We have probably the tightest restrictions in the state, and to be quite honest, even with the minor changes proposed in this bill, we'll still have the tightest restrictions in the state. However, after working with the Office of Law and Planning and Zoning, I worked with stakeholders to find out how we could craft this code, open our zoning a little bit, take care of a couple other issues, to be, remain relatively conservative, but ensure that our remaining dispensaries can open and locate and start serving our nearly 9,000 registered medical cannabis patients. We rank fourth in the state of residents currently card-holding patients using medical cannabis. With only two dispensaries open for business due to these restrictions, we have created severe barriers to patient access. We've limited competition in the market, and thus we are sending patients out of county to fill their prescriptions for both convenience and lower-priced products. In a nutshell, this bill is about giving patients access to the medication prescribed to increase their quality of life and ensure our licensed providers can open for business. I can go through the bill, the some of the changes, or we can, this has been gone through our work session, so ultimately, well, ultimately, our, this is allowing, this bill is drafted would allow dispensaries, in a special exception, to locate in C1, commercial district. We would, it removes language that prohibits a display or depiction of the product to This bill would remove language that prohibits processors from only processing product grown on-site. And then we're, it lowers the distance from residential properties. This is a key component of this change to our zoning, in that currently in Senatorial 32 and Senatorial Districts 31, where they're densely populated with both commercial and residential co-mingling, reducing the setback from 750 feet to 500, to a dwelling unit, will really open up opportunities for, rather than saying just residentially zoned areas, because we can have residential properties in every zoning classification in the north part of the county. And it also, this bill also allows for licensees to apply for a variance, which currently they're prohibited from doing. And as far as I know, they may be the only business type that is prohibited from seeking a variance. So this takes our very, very tight restrictions and opens them up about this much, and hopefully we can get our remaining licensees up and running. So if anybody has questions for the panel, I'll...
Okay, thank you. The administration?
For the record... For the record, Pete Barron with the County Executive. With me is Ms. Rhodes and Mr. Swain. The, I understand there will be some amendments, and I'll comment on those at the appropriate time. I just want to reiterate what the sponsor said. I think this is an important bill that is well-crafted, does not blow our law wide open. It's a very narrow increase in allowing access to this important product for a number of patients. I just take a moment to talk. I did have a chance to visit one of these locations over the summer and did see folks from all walks of life with a number of different issues and ailments receiving help. And I think, as the sponsor mentioned, Anaronda County has the fourth highest number of patients. We do not have enough access for them, and this bill is a step to make sure that folks can get access to medication. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll have further discussion, but we have several people signed up for the public hearing. Mr. Volkey, did you want to go before, or?
I can wait.
Okay. All right. Folks, if you would come up, and what I'm going to do is call the people who signed up, and then there'll be a call for last call after. Mr. John Pika, Ms. Gail Rand, Ms. Nicolette Friend, Ms. Stephanie Dearson, if you would come forward. Yeah, and in the meantime, Councilwoman Fiedler's going to make a quick announcement.
I understand we have some scouts here from Severna Park who came out tonight, PAC 993. Just want to say thank you. I've had an opportunity to meet a couple of our local troops. You all are doing some fantastic work, and I applaud you for your commitment to the scouts. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pika, your name and two minutes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, my name is John Pika. I'm here on behalf of Alternative Medicine, Maryland. This is the fifth bill to address a problem that isn't a problem at all. This is not only the most restrict, or the most restricta law in the state, I have not seen a law like this in any county in the country. So I applaud the effort to open it up, but this doesn't open it up for the District, the District, of District 32. I know that Ms. Rhodes may still be here. The Department of Planning created a map of all the available areas in the 32nd District. I think the colors were purple. I don't think this is going to change that map very much at all. I think the areas that we're able, were right in the middle of Laurel Racetrack, the BWI Airport, and a couple other places that were related to BWI. So if, what I'd like to know is, why are we even, why is, so we don't need to blow up the law, this law needs to be repealed. I don't really see what the problem is. So I ask that if you do pass this bill, that you remove the straight-line requirement. So if you're trying to grant a benefit by changing 750 to 500 feet, you take it back when you make it a straight line. Straight-line requirements are only required of adult bookstores, adult movie theaters, dance halls, and 100 feet from packaged goods stores. They're not even, that's not even required for a methadone clinic. So if you're, people who are trying to get medicine, what you're doing is restricting access, and this doesn't open up access very much at all. The other change, I've got six seconds to say it. The other change on page 2, after the word "unit," add located in a residentially zoned property.
Mr. Pika, please summarize. You can go ahead.
I've said enough.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rand?
Mr. Chairman and County Council Members, my name is Gail Rand, and I've been advocating for medical cannabis since 2013, for my son Logan, who has epilepsy, autism, and ADHD. My advocacy has led me to a role in bringing, helped bringing safe medicine to patients in Maryland, as the CFO and patient advocate for Forward Grow, the licensed grower in Anaronda County. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Pickard for her leadership on this bill amendment that allows growers to process medical cannabis from other Maryland growers outside the county. We believe it will help to allow for even more variety of products for patients. But I also wanted to tell you about why I first began my advocacy work. My third child, Logan, was born in 2009. I watched with deep gratitude as this happy, beautiful baby hit all of his developmental milestones. After his first birthday, Logan experienced his first seizure, and everything changed. My child, my family, and our world would never be the same again. Logan would fall to the ground as if he was a marionette whose strings were cut. Logan had over 14,000 seizures, and his developmental, development was dramatically impacted. In 2012, I first got some hope. Medical cannabis worked for our friend Zakai in Colorado, who suffers from... Medical cannabis worked for our friend Zakai in Colorado, who suffers from the same type of rare epilepsy that Logan has. Through StopTheSeizures.org, I worked hard with other parents to pass the medical cannabis bill here in the state in 2014. Proud to say that Logan is now seizure-free on medical cannabis alone for his epilepsy, which my husband and I believe saved his life. He's communicating far better than we ever dreamed, and his quality of life is incredible. So thank you for taking the time to understand the medical cannabis industry here in Anne Arundel County. I want to encourage your support and favorable vote on Bill 7-19. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Rand. Ms. Nicolette Friend?
Chairman and council members, thank you for your time. My name is Nicolette Friend. My daughter Faith is almost four years old. She suffered a severe brain injury at birth resulting in multiple diagnoses, including epilepsy and cerebral palsy. Medical marijuana has allowed us to gain better seizure control and stop seizures that often didn't respond to pharmaceutical options. It also provides relief when muscle tension and spasms are distressing for her. We have been able to wean medications that were hindering her development, as well as medications that were increasing her seizures. We currently travel 40 minutes or more to one of two dispensaries that have helped us. This is extremely difficult for us because Faith cannot eat and travel, or she throws up and aspirates. She needs 24-hour nursing-level care, so I can't leave her. My husband works, and we do not have in-home nursing. That means that Faith has to miss a meal in order for it to be safe for us to travel so far. She's only 24 pounds and cannot afford to miss meals. She also cannot afford to not have her medicine. Tragically, there have been times she did not have her medicine for that reason. Having a local dispensary would make obtaining her medicine so much more convenient. We're very pleased with the professionalism and the atmosphere of the dispensaries we have used, but a local store would make it far more likely to be able to get there and back in the small window of time that's safe for Faith to travel between her meals. It's so sad that we have to choose between the food she needs and the medicine she needs. I beg you to consider allowing dispensaries in our county to make medicine more accessible for children like Faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friend. Ms. Deerson?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Dorson. I actually learned about medical cannabis because of children like Faith. I am an infant toddlers physical therapist in Prince George's County, although I work and live here in Anne Arundel County. I went to a professional course. I knew nothing about cannabis. I believed everything that we believed. I was a complete nerd in school. I had never even had access to medical... Or not medical at the time. So I learned about it, and I started researching, and I was fascinated by what I learned. And then in February of last year, my father-in-law, an Annapolis resident, was diagnosed with glaucoma. That's the same brain tumor that killed Senator John McCain. I immediately started researching, and I realized his prognosis was extremely poor. I was shocked at the amount of research, though, that I found on cancer.gov regarding CBD and THC, which are the two primary components of medical cannabis. I presented this research to my very conservative, anti-drug father-in-law, figured, what did I have to lose? And he asked me to help him become a registered patient in Maryland. We got him registered, and I became his medical cannabis caregiver, which allowed me to legally purchase cannabis products in the dispensaries, as well as transport his medication to his home. I live in Lythaca. Amazingly, despite the legislation providing for two dispensaries, there was only one dispensary in Anne Arundel County, the one that's close to my home, in mid-February until he died August 20th. The second one, Mana and Edgewater, opened the week after he died. He was at in-home hospice for the final months of his life, and hospice provided him with morphine for pain. The medicification on the pervertus at the dispensary was strong cannabis oil, that he was given drops under his tongue, as well as a balm that we put on the face for the shingles lesions that had come as a result of the chemo. For my father-in-law, morphine provided made him agitated, whereas cannabis brought him relief. Oh, I'm running out of time. My point is, if I had not had the access, if I had not had the... It's expensive. If you don't have... You know, he couldn't get in a car and go somewhere. Taking an Uber, if my mother-in-law had had to leave him...
Please summarize.
I just... We need more access. We need access for everyone. We need access for the children. We need access for so many patients.
Thank you, Ms. Deerson. This panel is dismissed. Anyone who did not sign up on the sheet...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Fiedler. Yeah, go ahead. We have a question.
If you don't mind, I have a question for Ms. Friend and Ms. Rand. Since you have a little one in your arms, I'll ask you first. Thank you for coming out tonight. I had a question about, as a parent, you have to get licensed prior to your daughter getting a card. Is that correct?
I believe so. It's been some time since I did. But I believe that I needed to be registered and then have her registered as a patient, and then I was approved as a caregiver.
Okay, and this is simply for my information sake, and I'm not familiar with this. Does she have to be present with you?
She does not have to be present. But the patients, even when they're children, you know, typical... I believe that they loosen the legislation so that small children are allowed to go in with you. She does not need to be present, as long as I have all of my proof of caregiver information.
Okay. Thank you for coming out tonight. And then, Ms. Rand, obviously you are in my district, and we do not have any of these locations currently in 33. So am I safe to assume that West Street would be the closest for you?
Yes.
Okay. That was all. Thank you.
Any further questions for the panel? Ms. Pickard?
Well, since they're both... You both have small children. I just wanted you to describe how you administer medical cannabis to your children.
Can I go first? I'll go first. Sublingually is one of the best ways for Faith, although she does have a risk of aspiration. So rectally, just like any other typical rescue med, is acceptable, and she gets any regular maintenance doses through her G-tube. So that would be like you would take it orally. So it would depend, sorry, what the medicine is being used for, if it's in an emergency situation, or if it's just maintenance.
Thank you.
So if my son takes it orally, it's an oil tincture that he just administers, just like we do his Ritalin, as a specific dosage?
Cool. Thanks.
Okay, any further questions for this panel? Thank you so much. Again, anyone who did not sign up, if you would please come forward now to testify on this bill? Yes, if you'd give your name and address in two minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Patrick. My last name is Marnell. I live down in southern Anne Arundel County in Shadyside. I come to you here tonight wearing a couple different hats on this issue of cannabis. I am... I too am a patient, again, with the program, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to have an alternative to pharmaceutical medications. Living down in southern Anne Arundel County, it almost makes it more convenient for me to go into Calvert County than it is sometimes to come up here. The second hat I also wear is I'm a medical cannabis... I work in a medical cannabis dispensary as well, one of the two out of Anne Arundel County. So I've seen the gamut of those parents that come in to me for medication for their children that suffer from seizures or autism, right down to the stage-four cancer patients as well. So I know that I've had the opportunity to see kind of both sides of the issue, not only as a patient, but as an employee of a local dispensary, whereas their choices are very limited. So in closing, I can say that I often speak for not only myself as a patient, but hundreds of patients just such as myself. So thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. You've heard really moving testimony, and you know, these beautiful little kids, you know, or the parents who are suffering from cancer. You know, you can't be hard-hearted about those things. Conversely, I listen to C-SPAN too much, as you know. And Governor Hickenlooper from Colorado, which is one of the pioneering states with experimenting with legalizing different forms of marijuana, has really some... You know, they've had a lot of experience, and one of the things they've learned is that there are few, if any, decent studies about dose and response for lots of these different forms of cannabis, because, you know, you've got different growers, you know, and it's like when you go to the grocery store and you buy tomatoes, or oranges, or apples. There are lots of varieties. You know, what's the concentration? You know, if it's an edible form, that's, you know, you can wind up having different responses, you know, compared to all the other forms. And so I am glad that you're compassionate people. I wouldn't want you to be anything other than compassionate. But I would also ask you to maintain your vigilance so that we keep in mind that we need to hold the highest possible medical standards to make sure that what these patients are getting is what they really need, and they're not being overdosed or overly medicated. And you may know that that's... It's a hot-button issue in certain groups of senior citizens, because senior citizens' bodies slow down, and what was fine, you know, as a dosage when they were 10 years younger, is now seriously overdosing, and they're, you know, complicated side... You know, there are complications from side effects. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify, and thank you for caring.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no other movement in the audience, excuse... One more person, this is last call. If you do not... This panel is dismissed. Anyone else like to testify in this bill? Please come forward now. All right, name and address.
Sorry.
It's okay.
My name is Dean Warner. I'm with Green Point Wellness located in Lythaca, Maryland. Here today to be in favor of Bill 719, the one section, number five, that has to do with display of medical cannabis. And to our customers, I think that it's important that we are, you know, that we're moving forward to being able to do something like this to, you know, specifically the seniors in particular, to really show and showcase these different forms of delivery for these folks, you know, the tincture droppers underneath the tongue, the different forms of topicals that we have to offer them. And because there's been a bad stigma surrounding it, to help them have a better understanding and create a more welcoming environment in our storefronts for these folks, and to make them feel more comfortable, because a lot of these folks come in in a very uncomfortable situation. They really don't know what they're walking into, and I think that it's, you know, significantly important that we can really showcase that it's something that... Not what it's been depicted for a very long time. So I'm in favor of the bill, and if you guys have any questions for me, I'd love to take the time to answer them for you.
Okay, seeing no questions and no other movement in the audience, the public hearing, Bill Number 719 is now closed. Madam Secretary, I'll give her a second. Could you please read the title of Bill Number 719?
Bill Number 719, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Licensed Premises of Licensed Dispensaries, Growers, and Processors of Medical Cannabis.
Okay, we'll open this up for discussion.
We have an amendment, sir.
Oh, we do? Well, I don't know if anybody had any further discussion first. Ms. Fiedler? Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I passed around a page from the papers that we got prior to our work session. There's a pie chart breaking down the qualifying medical conditions, and I don't know if there's anyone here who can answer this question, but the big question mark I have, which makes up 26, over 26,000 certified patients, is "other." I understand, you know, PTSD, seizures, pain, but what is "other"? Because I don't know if you go to a traditional pharmacy, if there's a category of "other." And I just don't know if we have some examples?
No.
No? No, okay.
Ms. Pickard, do you know? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, administration, if you come forward, please. So we don't have an answer to your question, but...
No, did.
There are amendments, and I will guess read amendment number one. Madam Secretary, could you please read amendment number one?
Amendment number one, this amendment modifies the distance requirements for licensed premises of licensed dispensaries of medical cannabis to require distance be measured from lot line to lot line.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pickard, this is your amendment. I don't know if you want to...
Sure, I'll be happy to speak to it. During our work session, it came to our attention that some of the language change from current code to what's drafted in the bill as is right now moved. It was not my intention to change the setback, the 750-feet setback between a dispensary and a public school building, and there was some concern from my colleagues that changing it from primary entryway to lot line could possibly bring a dispensary closer to a public school. So we are taking the language back, so we go lot line to lot line, from property lot line of a dispensary to property lot line of a school. And in good faith from our work session, I wanted to make sure that this amendment covers that language change.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Administration, your response?
For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Again, with me is Ms. Rhodes and Mr. Swain. The administration fully supports this amendment, as was discussed at the work session. I think it makes sense.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on amendment number one?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please read amendment number two?
Amendment number two, this amendment removes licensed premises of licensed dispensaries of medical cannabis as a special exception used in C-1 commercial districts.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this amendment?
I was actually planning to withdraw the amendment, Mr. Chairman. I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. Madam Secretary, can we withdraw amendment number two, please?
So done.
Okay, amendment number three, then.
Amendment number three, this amendment restores a requirement that licensed premises of licensed dispensaries of medical cannabis be located at least 750 feet from residentially-zoned properties, and removes the straight-line method of measuring distance.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as Ms. Tate, our counsel, just pointed out to me, we have in part already adopted some of this amendment with respect to the way that we're looking at lot lines as opposed to the primary entryway. However, what this amendment also does, in addition to that change, is that it restores, excuse me, the requirement both from a residentially-zoned dwelling, as well as from a school or property owned by the Board of Education, I should say, to 750 feet, as opposed to the change down to 500 feet. So that's the purpose of the amendment, and I think that, given that we are restoring the ability to have a variance, and that the administrative hearing officer can make that decision, that this makes sense. So for that reason, I'd be moving the amendment.
Okay, we'll hear from the administration, and then response. Mr. Barron?
Sure. The administration opposes this amendment. Understand the intent that Councilman is getting at, but I think some of these issues were discussed at the work session with regard to particular portions of the county being situated where there's not enough places to locate, and we think the way the bill is drafted currently, with the addition of the amendment that was just adopted, achieves those goals.
Okay, is there any discussion on amendment number three? Ms. Councilwoman Pickard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I feel like we certainly need to be reducing the setback to 500 feet, that's only one portion of the language that we drafted in Bill 719. One of the other issues regarding setbacks is having the property... The language in 719 is dealing with an actual dwelling unit, whereas currently, this is basically what's in the current code. And the problem with this language is, planning and zoning is interpreting that to mean anywhere where a residential property could locate. So it's restricting zoning areas of C, commercial and residential. So the language in 719 is changing the language to a dwelling unit, not just residentially-zoned property, because that's any property. So I think if we're going to actually make any progress in allowing our dispensaries to locate, we actually need to make some changes to the code. So just relying on a variance is not going to cut it. That's leaving... We're abdicating our authority to decide where we think it's appropriate for a medical dispensary to... Or any business to locate, and we're asking a... Basically asking... Leaving it up to an administrative hearing officer. I'm actually trying to get the conditions that need to be met in special exception to be something that's doable for our dispensaries, and that's why I oppose this amendment, and I would strongly suggest my colleagues do the same. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hare, and then back to Councilman Volkey.
Mr. Barron, has the administration actually evaluated how many additional properties might be opened up if you reduce it down to 500 feet?
As far as I know, we don't have an exact number, but we understand it would open up a number.
What is that understanding based on?
Discussions with planning and zoning, with the sponsor.
Okay. Ms. Rhodes, has planning and zoning done an evaluation of how many properties might be opened up?
We have looked at the C-1 zone properties, but there's no way to determine...
We have looked at the C1 zoned properties, but there's no way to definitively give a number, because we don't know if that property is occupied by an existing business, if that property is under a federal loan. I mean, it's very difficult. You can only hope that it would open up opportunities for more dispensaries in C1, but we would never be able to have a number with less than 3% margin of error. It would be at least 20% or more margin of error.
Okay. Is, oh, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess my question to either Office of Law or Planning and Zoning would be, I heard Mr. Pika testify. He's here lobbying in favor generally of the idea of the bill, but he basically says this doesn't go far enough. You all heard that. And in fact, what he said is, 500 feet, 750 feet, it's irrelevant. It doesn't make any difference to actual businesses in this area. Is he right or wrong when he says that?
Greg Swain from the Office of Law. The thing about the distance requirements and the other requirements for dispensaries is it is very site-specific. As far as mapping these changes, which Councilwoman Hare just requested, it's because there's so many individual factors that matter, it's virtually impossible to do it. And I think Mr. Pika is speaking about his experiences and looking for a site in his district. So obviously, the bill applies county-wide. So we, with my discussions with the Office of Planning and Zoning, we look at what problems applicants have brought when they were looking for a site, and what problems the Office of Planning and Zoning became aware of as they went through that process. So the residentially zoned property requirement, which was obviously in the code now, did prove to be a problem, because it does capture much more than just lots with houses on. And I think the intent was to keep it away from residences. So it's, I appreciate what Mr. Pika is testimony, and I appreciate the problems he's had, but we do feel that this is a step in the right direction, versus just repealing the law in general.
Okay, and so that leads me to naturally two more questions. So if we were to take the distance from 750 feet but from a dwelling as opposed to a residentially zoned property, then would that solve this problem? Instead of changing this, you know, I'm trying to go through this with a scalpel, if you will, and figure out to what degree do we need to take things back to make it so that business can still operate, but that we're keeping, you know, some degree of regulation here. So that, I guess, would be my first question. I'm not sure which of you is the right one to answer that. The second question I would have is, Councilwoman Picker just mentioned, you know, that we're ceding our authority in some way, but it almost seems to me like the person who is the most appropriate to make this decision is going to be the hearing officer who can take the site-specific, fact-specific situation, look at all that in a vacuum, as opposed to us who are sitting here trying to legislate county-wide. So doesn't the variance fix that problem? So I know that's two questions, and I apologize for asking it that way, but...
Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. A variance should not be based on site selection.
Okay.
It should be based on something that is unique and inherent to that property and not trying to fit a site in a specific congressional district, which is what the hearing officer would be doing. So I agree with Councilwoman Picker that I don't believe a variance is the tool to use to try to locate this property, that perhaps this bill, reducing some of the distance separation requirements, would be a step in the right direction.
Okay.
Because it would be difficult to determine how many sites would be available unless you actually physically walk these properties to find out, is it occupied by a dwelling? You know, is there a school? What type of school? I mean, it's not as easy to see on a map. It's very site-specific.
Okay. And about the dwelling? So the idea of going from, instead of changing this from 500 feet from a dwelling, going 750 feet but from a dwelling as opposed to from a residentially zoned property? So if we were to do that, would that fix this problem?
Well, so Pete Barron, I think that's a value judgment about what the right number is, and it's 750, 500. As a matter of policy, the Administration agrees with the bill as drafted. We think it's reasonable.
Does Planning and Zoning have any input on that?
I've spent countless hours with all of the dispensary, and I could tell you, they had a lot of difficulty, even with Mr. Pika. He made two attempts in trying to locate a dispensary. I mean, several hours looking at several properties, measuring the distance. He made one application. There would have been at least five or six variances for that application. He withdrew, found another site, went forward. The variance was denied, which is why his client has not been able to operate.
And so how did we arrive at the 500 figure? I mean, because as Mr. Barron said, that's a value judgment. So obviously, 750 was too high, 500 is the right number. Is 550 the right number? Is 650 the right number? Was there some sort of analysis that was performed where you looked at each of these situations and you said, well, we're finding that people are just a few hundred feet off? How was that value judgment made?
You would have to ask the sponsor of the bill.
But I'm asking for the, only because, as you said, Mr. Barron, that the Administration agrees, and the Administration has made this value judgment and concurs with the value judgment that the sponsor made. So how did the Administration reach that figure?
I mean, I think it's as...
They didn't draft the bill.
Yeah. They concur with it, so... We concur, yeah, we agree. I mean, I think frankly, it's... I'm saying, I think 500 is too short, but I've made that decision by looking at what's in the current code and saying, well, I'm just going to go with what's in the code. I think that's right. But if you're going to deviate from that, then I guess my question is, how did that deviation figure come up? And that's what I'm trying to understand.
It's, I think it's as much an art as a science. I think it was a reasonable number. I mean, 500 feet is, you know, more than a football field, right?
And half of what we started out with, which was 1,000.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Okay, we're going to go to Councilwoman Rodvian, then back to Councilwoman Picker, and then to Ms. Fiedler.
I think this question is for Ms. Rhodes, but I'm just wondering if you can give us a little bit more information on how a dwelling place, is that the terminology?
Dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit is defined. Does that mean someone's actually living in it? Or is it something that looks like a house? I know that, I know there's a lot of variables, so I'm just curious if you can give us a little more detail.
Yeah, the zoning code actually defines a dwelling unit.
Okay.
And I can tell you how it's defined in the code.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Dwelling unit means a single unit, including attached garages and decks, providing complete independent living facilities for at least one person, including permanent provisions for sanitation, cooking, eating, sleeping, and other activities routinely associated with daily life. So when we look at an aerial photograph, we're looking at, you know, the Estat information, the State Department of Taxation assessment, to determine whether it's a dwelling. We're actually looking at Google Earth, and so we kind of use those tools to determine whether or not it meets the definition.
Okay, and so it wouldn't necessarily require that someone is using it as a dwelling?
No, it would happen to be a dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Picker?
Yeah, I just wanted to address my colleague's concerns. You know, when we're, as we're trying, as I was drafting this bill and working with Planning and Zoning in the Office of Law, and trying to go back through the public policy debate that's been going on here for 18 months, understanding where we started from, which was de facto prohibition, you know, rather than taking this in, like Mr. Pika suggested, blowing up the bill and starting from scratch, and maybe trying to write something that looks like our neighboring counties, I did want to address where we are currently in Anarundel County with our communities, but also in District 32 and District 31, those senatorial districts, they're very, there are more, some of our more mature neighborhoods and establishments where commercial and residential meet. They're very close to each other, but keeping that, you know, some sort of a distance, that football field distance, I mean, if you're interested in, if we really want to help these, we can reduce it to 200. But I was trying to keep in a conservative, keeping in, you know, keeping our community members and their understanding of a safe distance, like a, you know, like a liquor store. But, you know, I want to remind folks that a cannabis, a medical cannabis dispensary is so highly regulated by the state, they have security inside their buildings, they have security outside their buildings, they have this, you know, an incredibly workforce that's been, has criminal background checks going back five and eight, 10 years. I mean, it's, I think we're splitting hairs over 750 feet and 500 feet, but if we don't actually do something to address the restrictions in our code, we're going to still have two dispensaries in a year from now and prohibit and keep the barriers for our patient access. And I think we've heard very powerful testimony tonight. And I think 750 feet is too far. I think 500 feet tackles that, brings that restriction down, but still keeping a distance from a neighborhood. It's that simple.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To my colleague's point a few minutes ago, dwelling unit versus residential, because I know we have airports in Anarundel County that are considered residential. Is there, in your position, a significant reason why we wouldn't focus on dwelling unit versus residential? And keeping that number for residential, knowing that some residential could be an airport at the lower number of 500, but dwelling unit at 750?
So you're asking the question, why?
Yeah, I think Mr. Volkey asked this question, and your position was, as this is written right now, is moving in the right direction, so perhaps we don't need to consider dwelling unit as language. But I'm wondering why specifically, if there is a difference?
It becomes a difference when a residentially zoned property is undeveloped. So if the protection is going to be in place for the ultimate use, which would be the dwelling, you would want it for a residential district. But if you're trying to focus on relaxing the restrictions for the two remaining dispensaries that are in more densely compact congressional district, then dwelling unit would work at this particular time.
Thank you.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess I want to understand this, then, because when Councilwoman Picker introduced the bill, she said, we have two dispensaries, we have eight more that are in limbo, we have 11, I guess, let me ask you a couple of questions. We have 11 licenses in this county, right?
We have, I checked the medical cannabis dispensaries website, we have 10 dispensary licenses that were issued in Anarundel County. Only one in District 21, they didn't come fourth, three in District 30, and two for the remaining districts, which equals 10.
Got it. Thank you. And so of those, two are operational?
Three are in operation.
Three are, okay.
Yes. One, Greenpoint in Lythicum, the one on West Street in Annapolis, and the other one on Solomon's Island Road, they're in operation.
And then of the other seven, how many of them have received some form of approval to begin or get close to operating?
All but two.
Okay. So eight out of 10, 80%, are basically in the pipeline with the law as written today to be operational?
Yes.
Okay. And so of the last two, that's really what this bill is trying to address, is the two that are seeming to have difficulty not being able to locate. That's what it seems to me.
It seems like this bill is opening opportunities for the two that remain.
Okay. And so of those two, we are now, not only, and this is something that this bill does and no one's amended, restoring the opportunity for a variance process, which is currently not in existence in the county code.
That is correct.
Okay. In addition to that, the bill as written would open up C1 zoning as an opportunity for these medical cannabis dispensaries to be located?
Yes.
Okay. And that in and of itself, the variances and this opportunity to go into C1, well, I should take that back, even just the variances piece of it, that's going to be insufficient in the opinion of Planning and Zoning, or the Administration, or Office of Law, or whoever, to allow these last two dispensaries to be able to find somewhere to locate?
You can never guarantee that a variance will be granted.
Understood.
It's a site-specific application.
I get that.
It requires analysis based on that.
Understood. But if the variance was in place, theoretically, these last two dispensaries could find somewhere to locate, or they could get awfully close and then submit a variance, and then the hearing officer would have to decide whether they meet those requirements or not. Is that, my understanding of the process, right?
That option would be there.
Okay. And has Planning and Zoning had any discussions with the people who have these last two licenses to find out if this bill as written is actually going to fix the problem that these two dispensaries have in finding a place to locate?
They know where to find me.
Okay, but you haven't had that discussion with them?
No, I've reached out to Mr. Pika, but that's been a while prior to the last bill that passed.
So then again, this is theoretical, that we think we're solving their problem, but we're not sure that we're solving their problem. So as Mr. Pika said, we may be back for iteration six, seven, or eight in the next year to try to continue to solve the problem for these folks. That's rhetorical, you don't have to answer that. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Picker?
Well, if my colleague's real concern here tonight is to allow the last two, although we only have two open, so as the other eight...
Three open.
West Street's not open, but that's not for this conversation. If you really want all of our licenses to be up and operational, let's go permitted use, and let's throw out, you know, permitted use. Let's just let them locate like a pharmacy. And I don't think that's what you're looking for. So why don't we pass this bill as written and move along?
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you. I have one other question about what you mentioned about the undeveloped property before. So in the current code, we're measuring 750 feet to a residentially zoned property. In this new bill, we're measuring to a dwelling unit. So am I correct in understanding that under the new, the proposed language here, if a dispensary found a C1 or C2 or C3 property or whatnot that backed up to an undeveloped residential property, it could locate there notwithstanding the fact that a year from now, there could be a home there fewer than 500 feet? Is that accurate?
If the language remains the same, and it's, the separation is required for the residential zone and not the dwelling, it would just be based on that residential zone, and they would have the separation distance if, should a house be constructed?
Okay, okay, but the way it's written, the way it's proposed, if it's undeveloped there, essentially the setback is not applicable?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, amendment three was properly moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on amendment number three?
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Picker?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, amendment number three is defeated.
Okay, Bill number 719 as amended will be heard at the next meeting, March 18, 2019. Moving along, Resolution 819. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 819.
Resolution 819, resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Clifton Larson Allen LLP, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year 2019.
Madam Auditor, I don't know if you want to chime in?
Um...
Okay. Mr. Barron, Administration?
For the record, Pete Barron, county executive, this is not our resolution, this is the council's, we have no position.
So essentially, for those of you, for the background, every year, we have to have financial audit. We hire a company, this is just a part of the normal process, really nothing else. But the chairman typically introduces the resolution, and that's the way it goes, so. Any questions, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shocking. Just getting used to looking over at me. Maybe you know, or maybe Madam Auditor knows, but how did we just select Clifton Larson Allen for this process? I would just be curious for the public to know sort of how we came to this decision.
Sure. So back in the fall, a committee was established, myself, Karen McQuade, and Phyllis, who was the county auditor at that time. With all of the transition, with the county auditor, the county executive, and all of that, we decided that it would probably not be a good time to change auditors. Also, Clifton Larson has been doing the audit, and so we decided what we would do is, in their previous contract, they had CPI clause, which basically said that they would renew for 2.1% increase... basically said that they would renew for 2.1% increase. So, in discussion with Clifton Larson, they submitted a proposal, and it was within those guidelines, and we, as the committee, decided to stay with them one more year and go out to bid next fiscal year after this county auditor and this new administration has a chance to work with Clifton Larson and find out everything that we need to know before going for a replacement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions from the council? All right, we're gonna open the public hearing on Resolution 819. Is there anyone like to come speak on Resolution 19? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 819 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 819.
Resolution 819, Resolution Concerning a Determination by the County Council to Engage the Services of Clifton Larson Allen (LLP), an Independent Firm of Certified Public Accountants, to Perform the Financial Audit for Fiscal Year 2019.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 819.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 819 is adopted.
Right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 919.
Resolution Number 919, Resolution Approving the Recommendation of Billy Penley Continuing to Serve as Acting Health Officer.
Okay, this administration, Mr. Barron?
Yes, Pete Barron, Office of the County Executive with me is Mr. Swain from the Office of Law. As you may know, Fran Phillips went back to work for the Department of, the State Department of Health last fall. This resolution approves Ms. Billy Penley to serve as acting health officer. The administration, as you know, is currently in the process of selecting a permanent health officer. We will continue with Ms. Penley in the acting role until we bring the person we select forward to you. As you know, the council sits as the Board of Health and has to approve whomever is brought down. You should have her resume in front of you. Ms. Penley has previously served as the County Department of Health's Chief Financial Officer, and has been doing a fantastic job keeping the department moving forward as the administration has turned over, and we are in, as we are searching for a permanent replacement.
Okay, well, let's open it up for public hearing, I'm sure there'll be some discussion. Anyone like to come forward regarding Resolution Number 919? I have nobody signed up. Ms. Johnson? If there's anyone else, again, that'd like to speak on this resolution, please come forward at this time.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have a particular bone to pick with the Anorondal County Department of Health in relationship to their approval of septic systems without adequate setbacks. Some years ago, a neighbor, you know, had a failing septic system. He was a real estate investor, he didn't care too much, just keep those rents coming in. And anyway, the upshot was, you know, an entire new septic system was installed, and the problem was that he didn't meet the adequate setbacks. The statute at that time was 10 feet from the property line. And so anyway, they just granted him a waiver. Now, eventually, the state got involved, and supposedly somewhere buried in the state code, the health officer is allowed to grant a variance, but in order to try to comply with the federal constitution, the person whose property is being encroached upon is supposed to receive notice and have the opportunity for a hearing. Twice now, this has gone on, no notice, no hearing, no change, no opportunity to say, "I don't want somebody's tenants to flush the toilet and to have the fluids go out into the drain field and then seep onto my property." Now, that might not bother you, but I think at least I have the opportunity to say, "Well, you know, he owns two properties, and with that other property, he could divert, you know, the waste, the extra waste onto his other parcel of property instead of onto mine." Now, you may think that that's unusable, and I'm just being really grumpy, but there might be somebody else in Anorondal County who believes that the law should be adhered to...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. And that there must be notice, and that there must be an opportunity for a hearing, and that, you know, the injured party should have some relief.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 919 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 919.
Resolution Number 919, Resolution Approving the Recommendation of Billy Penley Continuing to Serve as Acting Health Officer.
Okay, do we have any discussion amongst council? I see Councilwoman Lacy.
I guess I'd like to know from the administration, you might as well tell us right here in this public setting, what's the status of your search for a permanent health officer? Is there any chance that we'll have one in time for the next time we sit as the Board of Health? And just let us know what you're doing, because, you know, the way this resolution is written, it is broadly granting an authority from March 1 until a health officer is appointed by the secretary, which is an open period of time, that, open-ended, that it just isn't normally what we do here.
Once again, Pete Barron with the County Exec. So we are moving forward in the process. As you know, there's a state end to this. You know, we had hoped to move a little bit faster, but I can't give you an exact date, but we are actively moving. This is something that we hope to bring down very soon. And I know that's not a specific answer, but it is something that the County Executive has been in talks and working with almost daily. A few days ago, in this very room, our transition team got together and made reports, there are a number that a permanent health officer is essential to complete. So while I wish I could give you a specific date and a specific time that we will be bringing someone forward, all I can say is we are close, but not ready to put an exact date on it, and I apologize.
Well, I think there's an in-between, which is, do you still have the application open publicly for people to apply to become the health officer?
Um, I mean...
Or is that closed, however you've solicited applications? Is that process open or closed?
It is not closed, but I think we've started interviewing.
Okay, so you've begun interviewing. Does that mean you have vetted the people that you are interviewing?
We have not completed the vetting process, no.
Okay. And do you have a specific number of candidates that you want to try to interview before making a selection that you would then recommend to us?
No, we don't have a set number that we want to meet, but we do want to talk to a variety of folks to make sure that the County Executive is comfortable, that they share his vision, and is somebody that will serve our county well.
And what has been the scope of the search that you have conducted so far for candidates?
I haven't been involved in every discussion around it, but I know folks have been reached out to across the state. Folks have been recommended from a number of different folks. We've had people in our transition team that have brought names forward. We have had folks who have contacted us independently. We have had folks who have just reached out, yeah.
Okay. And, Mr. Swain, what would happen if we do not approve this resolution?
If you do not approve this resolution, right now, she was appointed with a six-month acting position. If we do not approve this resolution, we will not have an acting health officer, which is going to be a problem at the state level, because we're required to have a health officer. So the reason that this resolution is open-ended, as you noted, is not because of any particular provision of state or county law, it's because that's what the Secretary of Health has agreed would be the appropriate way to proceed under these, you know, in this circumstance. County law has very specific time limits on how long you can be acting, but this position does not.
So this position is not what's covered under that six-month limit?
No, the original resolution appointing her as acting was done with a six-month limit, and I think that was done, really, because our charter says someone can be appointed as acting for two months by the County Executive. It can be extended once for six months by resolution of the council. That's what was done originally with Ms. Penley. But because this position does not fall wholly under county jurisdiction, by agreement with the Secretary of Health, we elected to proceed in this fashion. If she is appointed under this resolution, it will still go to the Secretary of Health for his approval, which we would expect would be forthcoming.
And does the Secretary of Health have the legal authority to appoint someone, even if we do not?
I do not believe so. I believe it comes with our recommendation. We appoint, they confirm.
I guess I'm surprised by that. I'm just, I'm genuinely curious whether that has or hasn't been addressed in the law, because if it's, we approve and they confirm, but if we do not nominate anyone, and yet they require us to have this position, then the state would either, would what? Would force us to appoint someone within a particular time?
Well, they wouldn't force us, but we would be in violation of the requirements of state law that require us to have a health officer.
Right. So I am not suggesting that we go and become in violation of state law, but then what are the consequences of being in violation of this state law, given that our appointee, or our acting appointee, doesn't meet the qualifications, that's my understanding, that she doesn't meet the qualifications to become a permanent appointee, and we have been, it's been in this situation for a while. So what consequences are we inviting if we do not appoint someone and are therefore not in compliance with the state law?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. Counselwoman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would the administration be amenable to an amendment to this resolution that would establish a 60-day term for the health officer, beginning today, and only going for 60 days forward, to address some of the concerns that Councilwoman Lacy's raised?
Beginning March 1, though.
Oh, March 1.
I think the March 1 part's important.
Okay. I mean, I think we will be able to meet the 60-day timeline. However, I would respectfully ask that the council not take up that amendment. I think it makes, I understand what we're trying to do here, but I think we may, we may need a little bit more than 60 days. I hope we don't. I think we're very close, but we are also dependent on the state process, and I, you know, I'm not exactly sure if we can guarantee that all the confirmation would be done in 60 days.
Well, if it came down to, I don't know, the 50th day or something, and the administration could see, "Look, this isn't going to get through," the administration could always come back in and ask for another resolution to continue appointing Ms. Penley to continue serving as the health officer, right?
Theoretically, I mean, I think we could, right?
Well, because this acting position would not be subject to the charter limitations, that is possible. And just one correction, the health officer is nominated by resolution, that's what this process is, and then actually appointed by the Secretary of Health, the state Secretary of Health.
Would the administration, would 90 days be sufficient? I guess what my concern is, sort of looking at this generally, and I think Councilwoman Lacy got on this, and we actually honestly had this discussion last time, when, last meeting, when we were reappointing Mr. Martin for detention, and this question of acting and how long. And obviously, in the county charter, Mr. Swain clarified, it's not just the 60 days, there's the reappointment for up to, I think, four months.
Six months.
Six months, okay. With this, it's an open-ended resolution. So I guess the concern that I think I had last time, and it sounds like Councilwoman Lacy has here too, is, can we put an end date on it where we say, "Look, this is how long we're willing to go?" So I guess I'm asking, would the administration be amenable to a 90-day window from March the 1st?
Again, I'm not sure how long, and because part of this process is outside of the administration's hands with the state, I'm a little uncomfortable saying it would be this much. You know, we can get it done in 90 or 120 days, or six months. I fully expect that we'll be bringing somebody down for the council to do its job soon, but then there's still the state process that's involved. So I would, I would, I just wish I had a date that I could say.
I get it, I understand. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if you get in a situation where you really are up against the wall, and we're running into that 90-day deadline, and it looks like things at the state have stalled, couldn't the administration bring another resolution and just ask for sort of a reauthorization? I don't know of anything in the charter or the law that would be a problem for that, Mr. Swain, if you want to weigh in?
No.
No.
No, it's, the process we've come up with is more by agreement than by law.
Right.
If we had to do it for a six-month term, for instance, we've already done that once.
Okay. So we could do it, we could come back again?
Theoretically, yeah, I guess.
Counselwoman, or, Mr. Volkey?
No.
Okay. Counselwoman Lacy.
To follow up on that point, do you have information or estimates from the, from the secretary on how long they normally take, on average, to confirm a nominee?
This is my first health officer, so I'm not sure.
And I don't know.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I hope, I hope you're preparing an amendment there in the back, Mr. Volkey, because...
I'm working as quickly as I can.
Okay, well, I guess we'll keep asking questions, or can we have a pause? Because I really, I think we're, we're concerned about the principle, which is that we don't make open-ended appointments for non-permanent positions in this way, or at least insofar as we understand it. And I don't think we're hearing an argument that sufficiently overcomes the, "You just have to come back and tell us what you're doing." Because then, not only are we holding the County Executive and the administration accountable, which is what our constituents would want us to do, but if, suppose the hangup is the state, well then, together, we will be then saying to the state, "Hey, we've got to report back to the County Council, you know, can you speed this along? What's your reason for not speeding this along?" So I'm not going to support this resolution unless we have that sort of amendment.
Counselwoman Hare.
I'm just wondering if it's possible, if it is, if there is no amendment, or if maybe the amendment's coming, I think you said, but if we ask for a status update in 90 days, and we can introduce a resolution ourselves to put a time limit on it in 90 days, if we so fit, if we so, if we see fit?
I mean, we would, we would, I'm sorry.
I mean, if I'm saying, like, we vote on this one as it is today, so that we have an acting officer in place as of March 1, but we all look at it again in 90 days and see what kind of progress there's been, if any, and we can then put a deadline on it if we need to, or, I'm just trying to move the chains, that's all. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lacy.
My concern with that would be the precedent that it sets, really.
Sure, understood, yeah.
And it would have to be approved by the Secretary of Health, that subsequent council action.
Thank you.
Whereas with this action, we could put this deadline on, and then it would be binding on the administration if things are not done, to come back and ask for a reauthorization. Is that the right procedure?
Well, whatever happens tonight...
Not binding, but...
Has to be approved by the secretary.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
While Mr. Volkey's reviewing the amendment, I have a question for Mr. Swain. If I'm correct, because I've been through this process before, you all don't have to come in front of us. Am I correct? You've, this is a process, but there's nothing in state law or anything that requires you. I mean, I understand for permanent, whatever else, but for acting, I know there was a debate over that. But can you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Swain, that if I looked in our charter, county code, specifically, or state code, that the administration in an acting capacity would have to come in front of the council? Am I correct, or am I wrong?
Well, acting is, the state law really doesn't provide for an acting. That's the issue. If it was county, we would know what the parameters were.
Yeah, okay. I think we're waiting...
I'll have the amendment.
Oh, you do, okay.
I'll just need to see if it's...
Yes, can you read Amendment Number 1? Thank you.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment reduces the term of the acting health officer to limit it to 60 days.
Okay, Mr. Volkey, this is introduced by... Mr. Volkey, this is introduced by you, so if you could...
I think I've laid out my thoughts on this one. I, I'm, may I ask a question to Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Was it 60 or 90? Because I think the actual statement in there allows until June the 1st, even though at the bottom it may say 60 days. So I think it's actually intended to be a 90-day till June the 1st.
My apologies. Yes, I can see that now.
It is.
It does say through June 1st, 2019.
Thank you.
So that would be 90 days.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, Madam Secretary, excuse me, could you reread the amendment to make sure everybody's clear? I think that's...
Yes. And I've corrected the amendment.
Sure.
This amendment reduces the term of the acting health officer to limit it to 90 days.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And then we'll open this up for discussion. Any discussion amongst council on this amendment? Councilwoman Pickard?
I do have a concern that because it's a two-step process, and we're relying on the state, and the administration has mentioned that they're getting close, I don't understand the need for this amendment, and I don't think I'll be supporting it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lacy?
I think to answer, or in response to Councilwoman Pickard's point, which I think is well-taken one, I do not view this amendment as being anything that implies that anyone is not doing their job in a timely fashion or anything like that, that it's simply maintaining a procedural check and a balance, so that there's a requirement of reporting back. And I agree, it won't be necessary if there is, in fact, someone to nominate for appointment within the 90 days, but if not, then there's a check in place. So I would encourage you to change your mind.
Ms. Tate, do you want to add something?
I just, you know, the council meets as the board of health in May, and the health officer is an executive with the board of health. So what would be appropriate to make sure you have that person on board by May? If you do not, please just procedurally advise the council so, and get a new amendment in, because generally, the way our process works is the executive brings it down, and then the governing body, being the two entities, the executive and the council, work together, and then forward it to the secretary. So it's important that sort of we maintain that line of communication. But again, we always, we meet in May and October, so it'd be swell if that person were sitting here in May, because it's been almost, it'll be almost a year at that point that we haven't had a permanent health officer. So, thank you.
That is the intention.
Okay. Any further discussion on amendment number one? Okay. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on amendment number one?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
No.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?[1750.51]